Aloha, everyone. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Ko'ola Loa Neighborhood Board Meeting for March the 13th. Before we get started, just wanted to go over the rules of speaking. I'm sure the maximum opportunity for all attendees to be heard, the following guidelines apply. Those joining the meeting are reminded to mute their microphones if online. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their question in the chat box or raise their hand using the Raise Hand function in the online meeting platform. This is indicated by hand or unmute yourself at the appropriate time as indicated by the chair. If accessing the meeting using your phone and you have a comment, indicate this by pressing the symbol star nine. And this will show the chair that the person calling would like to speak. To mute and unmute your phone, press star six. If you cannot push any star nine or star six, please wait until recognized by the chair to begin. All comments, concerns, or questions shall be two minutes or less. To help... All attendees have the opportunity to hear presentations and comments. Please place your device on mute until you would like to speak. When you are recognized, unmute yourself and make your comments. Please note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by state sunshine law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, six of this 11-member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. And this may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people. With that, we'd like to start with our monthly reports by HFD, who is here in person. If you could go to the microphone, give yourself and you... May I present?
Sorry. Hi, I'm Captain Marshawn from the Ho'ola Fire Station. Thank you for having me. I got stats for you guys. Wildland brush fires, we had one. For the statistics for February, this is what this is for. Activated alarms with no fire, there were two. Medicals, there were 49 medicals. Motor vehicle crash collisions, there were five. Mountain rescues, there were two. Ocean rescues, one. I got you guys' fire safety tip. Well, March 2025 fire safety tip is smoke alarms. Smoke alarms are crucial for saving lives and play a key role in home fire escape plan. When installed properly and maintained correctly, you provide early alerts, giving occupants the chance to evacuate quickly. Install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway, and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button. Place smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or stop responding when tested.
All right, do we have any questions from board members? Questions from members of the community in person? Sure, please proceed.
On illegal, sorry, drills? Yes. That, I don't have that information for you because all I got is that there were two. I can get that for you later, but specifically...
For the folks online, the question was how many of those rest, two rescues, if they were on illegal or legal trails?
On that, I don't have the information either, exactly where they were. I don't know. All I know is that they happened in February. We could, yeah, we can get that for you.
Okay, question was if where were the fires and he will get that information to us next month.
Hello. I suppose you all know that we now have little fire ants up on the trail. It's just the Ma'akua Trail that's closed. But as far as we know, the Ha'ula, Ha'ula Trail is open.
Okay.
So, but it's something that the whole community needs to be aware of, not to go on the Ma'akua Trail.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, we'll go to online. Do I have any questions from members of the public online? Great, hearing and seeing none, thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you.
Moving forward on our agenda, HPD, I believe I see Lieutenant Akagi online. Please proceed with your report.
Aloha, good evening, board, board members and committee members. I'd like to report the stats for the month of February 2025. Motor vehicle thefts, this month we had one compared to three the previous month. We had two burglaries this month compared to three the previous month. Three thefts compared to 12 the previous month. And one car break-in compared to three the previous month. No robberies were reported. Wanted to go just over the HPD is going into this new, we have these electric bicycles on the road, as most of you folks know. We're making this program to make the community aware of some of the laws that are in place now. So I just wanted to go over a few of these laws. The rider must be at least 15 years of age to operate it. The e-bike must be registered to a household member that is at least 18 years old. Helmets with a chin strap are required for riders under the age of 18. The motor for the e-bike must not exceed 750 watts. The maximum speed cannot exceed 20 miles per hour. The e-bike must have fully operable pedals. The wheels must face forward and remain in contact with the ground at all times. No wheelies or exhibition riding. An operator must remain seated in a standard riding position with one leg on each side of the seat. So just wanted to make the community aware with the new laws in place for the e-bikes that we want to, first of all, make them aware of the laws and then we'll start enforcement shortly thereafter. Other than that, any questions from the board or community?
Right, questions from the board?
Yes. But we have a lot of kids, I know in Ha'ula, that ride these e-bikes and a lot of it's illegal. So if we see something, know something that's illegal about it, we call police?
But yes, you can call 911 and we'll look into it. We'll stop them and address any violations that applies to the e-bike.
Okay, I've seen that so many kids are dying from this these days. And I feel like we need to be more aware in our community and prevent this from happening here. So... Okay, please call in if you see kids doing crazy stuff on those e-bikes because I know we see it. Thank you.
Questions from other board members? Auntie Kella, go ahead.
Do you guys go to the community association meetings? Or do they, when they have a town hall meeting, would you guys be there to give out more information about what's going on with the e-bikes?
Yes, you can, um, there's going to be more, more information coming out. I'm not, I'm not too, first of all, I'm not too sure about the town hall meetings. I can look into that. But there'll be more information coming out on HPD.org. Our traffic division will be sending out those, um, information on the e-bikes as far as the, what the rules and regulations are.
Any other questions from board members?
I'll just mention that I think the town hall meeting is something like May 30th. Does anybody, can you confirm that, Tessie or somebody? It's May 30th at Ha'ula Elementary, I believe. Please come and talk about that. Oh, Kahuku, I'm sorry, it is Kahuku. Kahuku Cafeteria. Yeah.
You'll see flyers such as these that were made up by the traffic division. So they're, they're, they're going to distribute these and get these, that information out to the public.
Could you send them to all the neighborhood boards too?
I, I can do that, yeah, I can.
That would be a great idea.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we'll move on to any other questions from board members? Okay, move on to members of the public in person? Great. Online, we have Catherine Heath with your hand up, please Catherine. She?
Good evening, Officer. On the matter of awareness. Driving home on Sunday afternoon, later afternoon, on the highway. And encountering not one, not two, but three cars in the Ka'ava area in front of the elementary school that had not one, but two tires over the white line as they were parked. And another egregious center was the gentleman who had his door wide open and was brushing sand off his feet. So Officer, in the matter of awareness, is it possible for the police to periodically stop in these areas that are known for such stylish parking that is dangerous on what is a highway? And remind or ticket the appropriate parties regardless of whether or not they are tourists on holidays? Because we've had some confrontations here in Ha'ula and elsewhere, which are clashes. And I think the awareness needs to go on both local side and on the side of the tourism. And as a resident, I just sometimes feel like the tourists are excited for their errors because they're on holiday. So is it possible for you folks to stop sometimes and mark these things? It's not like I can pick up my phone and call because I'm too busy dodging cars and speed bumps. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mrs. Heath. We, we definitely can look into that. I can send that message out to Kahuku and have them make periodic checks of those hotspots.
Okay, thank you. I see Jacob with your hand up online. Please proceed.
Yeah, Officer. Future question, not too sure if we can answer it. I would like to, in the future, own an e-bike that has pedal assist but may not fit within like the 750 watt. Is there a different way to register it? Or is just anything over 750 watt is illegal on the road?
Anything over 750 will be illegal unless it has the proper, uh, equipment such as a headlight, a brake light, a blinker, right-left blinker. You know, it's going to have to have all those requirements such as a motorcycle. If not, it'll be just like a, it'll be like considered like a dirt bike on the road.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public online? Right, hearing and seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you for, Lieutenant Akagi was, we look forward to your report next month.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. United States Army. Oh, oh, sorry, we had one more question. Oh, never mind. The Mayor's Town Hall, May 1st, 7 to 9 p.m. at Koko High School. May 1st, 7 to 9, Koko House, not husband, High School. Got it. Okay, United States Army, I don't see anyone here in person. Do we have someone online? Okay, please proceed.
Hi, everyone. My name is Staff Sergeant Hedgesmith. I'll be your U.S. Army representative. So just a few things to put out. We have an upcoming job fair. It's going to be held on April 22nd at the Ali Amanu Military Reservation Gym. It begins at 8:30 and ends at 2:00 p.m. It's open to the public. And advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com to apply in advance. Walk-ins are also welcome. The U.S. Army Garrison published their training advisory on March 3rd. And it contains information as follows. In March, the Army in Hawaii will continue training in the East Range area with Ranger Jungle Tactics, Small Arms Blank Fire, the 21st, the 24th through the 29th, and the 31st of March. There will also be aviation training. That'll be on the 6th, the 14th, the 19th, the 22nd, the 25th, and the 27th of March. Day only, 6 a.m. through 6 p.m. Additionally, additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training. And those dates are the 18th through the 20th, the 20th through the 24th, the 31st of March. Day and night live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. There will also be demolitions training. That's the first and the second, the 20th through the 21st of March, day and evening hours. If you want to be added to the training advisory list, you can email USAG.Hawaii.COMREL@Army.MIL. And lastly, some information to put out about the National Vietnam Veterans Day Parade. To all who served in Vietnam, we thank you for your service and your sacrifice. The National Vietnam Veterans Day Parade will be taking place on Saturday, March 29th to pay tribute to those who served our nation for the cause of freedom and liberty. The opening ceremony will begin at 4:30 at Fort DeRusi and parade will begin at 6:00 p.m. along King Kalakaua Avenue in Waikiki. Marching bands, veteran groups, military units, as well as many community groups from Hawaii and the mainland will take part in the parade. And that is all I have to put out. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Questions from members of the public here in person? Questions from member, members of the public online? Okay, hearing and seeing none, thank you very much for your report. Look forward to seeing you next month.
See ya.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, we're going to government reports. Do we have Mayor Rick Bantiardi's Representative Kat, are you online? I do not see Kat online, so we will move forward in our agenda. We're going to, Councilmember Matt Wire or any staffer here online?
Hi, my board members.
Hi, Chelsea, we can kind of hear you?
Oh.
Yeah, we're not really hearing you very well, Chelsea.
Oh, okay. Can I?
No, not, not, not good. Okay, looks like she's going to try and jump back in. Okay, we'll move forward. Come back to Chelsea when she gets back on. Any representative from House, Representative Congresswoman Joet Okuda, staffer here, online? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward in the agenda. State Senator Brenton Awai, I believe you have a staffer online. Please proceed. It was. Senator Awais, staffer?
Yeah, aloha, Mike Akko.
Go right ahead, please.
So some few updates. Two of our bills cross over to the House. For the first time ever, a bill banning foreigners from purchasing ag land. SB 242 has passed the Senate floor. Also, SB 1582, recognizing the coconut tree as an official food source, allowing the opportunity for more funding and support for CRB and planting initiatives. SB 1582 passed the Senate clean with a 25 to 0 vote, meaning that if no amendments are made in the House and it passes, it goes directly to the governor's office. We are currently in the process of one of our initiatives with EM Hawaii, which are collaborators with the Genki Alawai Project. Hoping to bring some of the positive results that they had at the project to the community. And organic and cost-effective solutions to assist in assess pool and water quality issues of the district. We hope to have them present in April's meeting to help bring some insight on effective microorganisms. Hoping that this collaboration will bring a breakthrough, organic and cost-effective approach. As low as possibly $500 a year. Could be lower depending on the effectiveness and the volume that one household may need. Open for any questions?
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members?
Hi, this is Dottie. I wanted to ask you, when you, when you're giving a price like that, it's $500 per household? Is that what you said?
Yes, I know that's just a quick number. Again, we, we're hoping to have some of the EM Hawaii representatives come and, and present in next month's community board meeting and be able to share more insight. But possibly as low as $30 to $40 a month as far as costs for this type of solution to add to your cesspool.
Has this been tried someplace else? I know you put them in the Alawai, but this sounds different.
So the Alawai is, 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 is does the Genki balls? But the, this would be more of the solution with just the EM, the effective micro solution.
Okay, so you're going to be on next month's agenda and, and we want to hear the whole scoop, okay? Thank you.
Mahalo. Any other questions from board members? Member, questions from members of the public here in person? Going online, members of the public? Online, any questions? Don't see anything in the chat. Right here in N C N one, thank you very much for, oh, we do have another question.
I think it's Bill 1739. Do you know that bill? It's, it's a bill that's been going through the legislature related to community readiness centers. It was put in by Ha'ima. Do you know the status of that bill?
I currently don't, but I can get that information to you.
It's S, I think it's SB 1739. I could have the number a little bit wrong. But can you find out and get back to us?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you next month. My apologies, I forgot. We, we have, well, I mistaken. We have Governor Representative Krista Kiana, she is here, so. I'm sorry, Erica, my bad.
Sorry, yeah, I think that was the previous Governor's Representative, but I'm Erica Yamouche, Communications Lead for the Office of Wellness and Resilience, which is currently housed in the Governor's Office but is moving to another department this summer probably, pending legislation. Let's see, everybody, I did want to follow up on a few questions that I got at last month's meeting. First, on the questions related to Turtle Bay, including the environmental impact statement and carrying capacity study. We do defer to City and County Representative as well as Department of Planning and Permitting. However, there was one question on eminent domain and if state law does allow eminent domain for kind of like cultural reasons. And the response that I got was that related to eminent domain, yes, state law does allow counties, governments to take private property generally through purchase for public benefit. And that is HRS 4661. On the question related to the petition, a proposal related to film industry. That gentleman's here tonight, but we did receive a number of pieces of correspondence at the Office of the Governor related to this in the last six weeks and did respond and meet with a number of community members on this issue. Or if there are further questions or if your specific correspondence was not addressed, please email me. And I think again, yeah, it's the wrong, maybe contact information for the previous representative, but I do have our contact information here. And then there was a question related to tax dollars going to tourism. The response that I received from, from the Office of the Governor Communications was that the state, through the Hawaii Tourism Authority, does promote tourism to Hawaii overall, not to specific hotels or hotel groups. As we know, hotels are private companies engage in a great deal of marketing permission on their own and are not publicly funded. Those were the questions that I received.
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members?
Did your committee have anything to do or I'm sure you're aware of the Climate Advisory Team and the work they've done?
No. So you mean the Office of Wellness and Resilience?
Yes, did, did you, were you involved in that at all?
No, so it's a little, a lot of people are using the word resilience in different ways.
Right.
We know it's very common, I mean, using climate change, climate resilience. However, in Office of Wellness and Resilience, we're actually talking more about mental health,
Mental health.
Behavioral health, so addressing mental health crises and especially trying to make our state service systems more trauma-informed.
Wonderful, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board? All right, any questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, please go ahead.
Evelyn Lane, I wanted to ask you if the governor is making preparations for helping those who are going to be affected by these changes in our federal government and Social Security, Medicare, SNAP, Medicaid, all of the rest. And what, I know that he helped hire some of the federal employees that were let go, but it looks like it's going to be a big effect, not just on the low income, but probably on the tourist industry too. Could you tell us about that?
And I have to come, go back to Governor's Comms to get a special response, but I do know that just working, the governor is working with the state legislature on the budget right now and they are trying to be really mindful of having to cover a lot of state essential services and social services in the event that federal funding does not come through.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, Uncle Goret, yeah, question, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just continuing on with the, the involvement that's going on with Turtle Bay, with the Department of Natural Resources and what they are coming up with, just the fact of knowing what the lack of, the, you know, lack of response that's coming from the Department of Natural Resources dealing with the fact of what's going on at Turtle Bay. And particularly with what's happening along the shoreline and the fact of what's going on with the, the various monk seals and albatross. And just knowing the fact that the environment impact statement that was supposed to be brought up by the Verge Board Members. And just going back to the statement that was made by Dr. Kovar back in 2010. And he indicated in his report, indicated in the law. Yeah, indicated in the, the Supreme Court of State of Hawaii back in 2010. And Judge Kovar indicated in civil number 06-1-0265, indicating, indicating the fact of what these departments are doing, knowing that they're not having to conform with the fact of what's going on with the environmental impact statement procedures there as well. So that's what my concern is in them because here in the end, this particular statement that Judge Kovar points out clearly that there's a need or there's no such thing as perpetuity of the permits that's being stated out there. And so we're just wondering like what's going on with the state involved with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're going to take that back too. Okay. All right, any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, going to online, I have a, can you please see if there is an update as to when the bridge work and how Ha'ula will be completed? And will that include restructuring of the road before and after the bridge? Last update, last update said early 2025.
I believe I had, yeah, that question, then we found the website for DOT. So I can look at if there's any updates on that website and if not, I can contact Department.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions from members of the public here online? Catherine, according to Catherine, the website is not safe. So if you could just inquire with DOT that, appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, seeing no other questions, hands up online. Thank you for your report. We have, did Matt Fire's, okay, you were here.
Thanks, everyone. That's why the connection was a little bit poor. I was on my way over here, so thank you for your patience. So I do have a report out. I know information was already shared about the Mayor's Town Hall. I also wanted to highlight that City Council is also in budget season. This week, we've been meeting with department heads on their budget proposals. And we encourage folks to reach out to their, to our office. Because council member will also be submitting proposed additions to the fiscal year 26 budget. And so if you have any suggestions, please feel free to, to reach out. Highlighting Mayor's Town Hall, which you folks already know. I wanted to follow up on some of the questions that were given at the last meeting. So one of them, starting off with, is there a way for council member Wire to diversify jobs and create higher and create higher paying jobs? And we looked into it, and so we have Bill fifty-nine, which is signed into law, which provides tax incentives for film studio facilities, supporting job growth in the industry while ensuring protections for local workers. Additionally, our office has helped fund positions within the Ocean Safety Department, the Office of Climate Change, Sustainability and Resiliency, as well as the Office of Economic Revitalization. And OER, they're a really neat department. They have really great resources, and they will continue to expand resources for businesses and job seekers, including its workforce development program, which aims to diversify Oahu's economy. So if you haven't taken a look at their page, I know that they have some great resources as well. Another question that was asked was, is there any way for housing and is there any way for council member to support more housing and community improvement? The context was, instead of letting developers continue to build these luxury, unaffordable spaces for the community. And so while the city cannot really prevent private land owners from legally developing luxury housing on property that they own, we can, we can provide incentives such as increased density allowances and fee exemptions to encourage affordable housing in the community. And so there's several bills that are highlighted on Council Member Wire's website as well. If you go to the page and you scroll down and you'll see affordable housing for families, some of the bills that are highlighted on that page is Bill forty, Bill fifty-one, sixty-three, and sixty-four. And there was another question that asked about, you know, what is the city council's authority over DPP? And the council has oversight, and we can post questions to DPP. You know, and, you know, while we're in budget season, we can also adjust their budget, but it doesn't really address DPP's ongoing staffing shortages, which has been consistently been an impediment to their ability to operate. And so the best that we want to do moving forward is to collaborate with them and work with them the best that we can, so that way we can build their staffing capacity and improve efficiency. Here, there was also a question, I think, last month that had to do with an SEIS not being provided by Areté. And so I looked further into this, and it looks like an SEIS was accepted in two thousand and thirteen, but there were lawsuits in two thousand and fifteen, and that's how, there was a lot of folks who sued, like the Sierra Club, Houston North Shore Country, other organizations, and that's how a lot of the land was, ended up being in the conservation season. And so, let's see, DPP's position is that a supplemental EIS thereafter was not needed. Yeah, those are the questions that I had, just wanted to follow up on. And then just wrapping it up really quickly, we are approaching our March full council. And so some bills that I just wanted to highlight is Bill fifteen, which is the Accessible Conversion Grant Program that Council Member Wire introduced. That's coming up for its second reading. Bill eighteen, which removes single plastic bottles from vending machines at city facilities. We expect that to be on the agenda for next week in full council. And then lastly is Bill sixty-one, which is the wheelies bill, establishes a clear standard for HPD to identify and cite individuals performing wheelies on public streets using e-bikes, mopeds, motorcycles, things like that. Right, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions from board members in person?
Tell me again what Bill fifteen is.
Bill fifteen is the Accessible Conversion Grant Program, so it allows families who have a combined income of, of under one hundred thousand dollars to receive grants up to fifty thousand dollars to help with their cesspool conversion.
Oh, they're, oh, that's the big difference with the last bill from the state, so that was only twenty thousand, so he's hiking it up to fifty.
Yes, yes. We know that it's a burden on, you know, on family households, and so that is coming up for its second reading on the March nineteenth agenda.
And so if that's passed and adopted, when would that be effective?
Oh, that would probably be something that would be discussed as we work closer to it passing, but I can find out, I'll go back to the team.
Okay, we are, Hotul is one of the second, it's the second highest priority in the state, our cesspool conversions because of the dramatic problem with wastewater being in the ocean. And we have studies going on on that right now, and we're applying our additional funding, and this would be great. We need all the help we could get, because seven hundred cesspools, it's a lot to change out. So thank you very much for your work.
Absolutely, and I just realized, I'm sorry, I didn't want to misspeak here. The agenda didn't come out yet for full council, but we do anticipate it being on the agenda. So if you are signed up for our mailchimp newsletter, we usually give those heads up for folks.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, Rebecca Carlson here. Hi, thank you for checking with DPP. I just wanted to know, are you aware of how long the environmental impact studies are considered to be good for?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I think, I want to say that when there were lawsuits that were happening previously, you know, those EIS, the very initial EIS, I think, was something like fifteen years old, and I think that's what had initiated some of the lawsuits that had gone on in the past. But I don't exactly know what that number is currently. So I'll, I could definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, definitely take a look into that, thank you.
Other questions from board members here? Okay, board members online? All right, members of the public here in person, any question for Matt Fire's office? Okay, we'll go here in the front.
You see earlier in the statement about the council had looked into the environmental impact statement and approving what's going on up there at Turtle Bay. But here, it points out clearly, Judge Kovar pointed out in two thousand and ten, and the thing that you folks need to discuss this particular matter, yet it's written right there in the law, it's supposed to be carried out, and says here clearly, consequently, the reasonable resolution of this writ is to order that summary judgment be entered in favor of petitioners, plaintiffs, appellantants, keep the North Shore Country and Sierra Club Hawaii Chapter, collectively plaintiffs, and against respondent defendants athletes, city, in the aim, director of Department of Planning and Permit DPP, and Quirino collectively defendants granting requests for declaration that a supplemental impact statement, SEIS, be required. Yet nothing like that has been discussed, guys, on the council, nothing like that from you guys pointing out what's going on, even having to eliminate the fact that what Judge Kovar points out clearly, what you guys are supposed to be following. Yet we know clearly, but looking what's going on in Turtle Bay right now, it's a totally illegal type of development that's going on. And yet the council, the council and Matt Mar then knows what's going on. And that's why we find it really kind of interesting that the council is saying that, oh, yeah, it's okay to have the environmental impact statement totally, totally be eliminated from what's going on. But yet, like I said, pointing out clearly, many times I brought this up, many times I brought this up, where Judge Kovar pointed out clearly what you folks are supposed to be following. And again, I'll point out the number, if you folks want to know what civil number it was, I'm saying it again. Civil number zero-six-dash-one-dash-two-six-five. That's in there clearly, pointing out.
Okay, Uncle, please summarize. Summarize.
Well, that's what's going on, and we're just going to find out what the council and Matt Mar then is going to do about that.
Thank you. Any other questions from members, oh, empty in the back?
I, I will have to follow up and see how we can kind of program some of the communication to the community.
Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Please, Catherine, go ahead.
I'm wondering if your office knows that the Supreme Court stated that, let me make sure I have this right, that the administrative rules, eleven twenty-two-hundred-dash-thirteen, limits an agency's ability to utilize previous, previous materials in making a determination to approve or deny any agency action, shall not without consideration, pre-examination, and comparison in past determinations and previous statements to apply to the action, adhere the action for which determination is sought. In other words, you can't use old material to determine a new subdivision application. And not only that, it says in the, the environmental laws that if the, if the project is over a half a million dollars, it must have an environmental supplemental, environmental impact statement. That impact statement that you're all are saying has been approved. The EPA, Hawaii EPA, told me over the phone that approved doesn't mean no finding of significant impact. That is not what it means, and there is, the court ruled that the nineteen eighty-five decision was vacated. It was void, it was invalid because it was stale. They also ordered that this two thousand and thirteen was set aside, and it was settled, and nothing now really is the environmental impact statement. We don't have a guide for our develop, for these developers to keep from screwing us. And if we continue to allow the city, the state, the federal government, everybody to ignore administrative rules and do whatever they please, how are we any better than what's going on in Washington DC right now? I would like to find out for me why we're not looking at them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the public here in person? Okay, we'll go to members of the public here online. All right, thank you very much, Chelsea, we look forward to seeing you. Okay, moving forward in our, Representative Sean Quinlan, I believe we got someone online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Gabriella Eard, and I serve as a legislative aide to Representative Sean Quinlan. I am here tonight on his behalf, as he had a prior commitment and is unable to attend. I will be sharing several key updates from Quinlan. I will take note of any questions or concerns to bring back to our office. Additionally, I'll, I will leave my contact information in the chat for any follow-ups. So one of the key updates is regarding HB two-three-five, which is now moving over to the Senate. Our office has received numerous complaints about speed humps, and in response, this pilot program will install speed cameras in place of certain humps, which will be removed as long as there is another means to slow down traffic. However, speed humps will remain in critical areas such as school zones. The overall community response has been positive, but we encourage anyone with concerns to reach out to our office and share their thoughts. Given the ongoing challenges in recruiting police officers, implementing an automated system like this is essential for improving traffic enforcement and safety. Rep Quinlan also wanted to highlight HB one-two-five, a key bill within a broader package aimed at reducing gun violence with a particular emphasis on the duty to secure firearms. HB one-two-five mandates that gun owners must store their firearms in safe or locker, ensuring that all firearms are properly secured with gun locks or safes to prevent access by minors and authorized users. The goal of this legislation is to implement preventative measures that can help reduce the risk of gun-related tragedies before they occur. Additionally, the House is working on a comprehensive biosecurity package that will provide increased funding to combat the little fire ant infestation now present in our community. This bill also addresses the growing threat of coconut rhinoceros beetles, strengthening protections on shipments both between islands and to the islands to prevent the spread of the invasive species. It will also allocate more resources and add positions within the Department of Agriculture specifically dedicated to invasive species control. Another important update is that one million dollars has been allocated in the state budget to replace the football field lines at Kukuku High and Intermediate School. This funding will ensure the field remains safe and fully functional for students, athletes, and broader community. That concludes the updates for tonight. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out, and I will ensure they are relayed to our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from board members in person?
Hi, this is Dottie Kelly Paddock. Do you know anything about Bill seventeen thirty-nine, which I believe is called the Community Readiness Center Bill?
I currently do not have any information in regards to that bill, but I can take note that you did have questions about it and relay it back to the office to find out some more information.
Okay, we'd appreciate that very much, thank you.
Sure, for sure. I'm sorry, can you repeat what the bill was again?
I believe this is correct. It might be off, but seventeen thirty-nine, Senate Bill seventeen thirty-nine.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Any other questions from board members here in person? Okay, members of the public here in person? Okay, please proceed.
Evelyn Lane, regarding Turtle Bay, and I know it's Department of Planning and Permitting issue, but the part that has to do with the easement that belongs to the community, I'm wondering if you could get a copy of the Coastal Forest, the Coastal Report that was done regarding this development and what's happening out there, so that we can see what kind of environmental impacts have been offered up as a report? Because I understand it was one that was done recently, and if we could get a copy of it, that would be nice.
Okay.
Evelyn R.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public here in person? We'll go to online, Jacob, I see your hand up, please proceed.
Hello. So my concern is basically for the humps. None of the humps are correctly used as the tool, correct tool to control speed or pedestrian safety. That is a fact from the Federal Highway Administration. I emailed them my concern, the amount of excessive humps, and got an email back from Wayne Konishiro, which is their Hawaii branch location, and none of these humps are federally funded because they don't pass the three main guidelines for it to be used properly. And the three main guidelines is basically is Cam Highway, post this speed limit slower than thirty miles per hour, because they're only built to withstand thirty miles per hour for these humps. Second, does Cam Highway experience high traffic volume? We already seen how bad traffic is, and traffic trains of fifteen cars coming down, because this, you know, just that's how bad traffic is. And the third is, is Cam Highway the only route to a town, which we know is only highway to the Koholau region? So if any emergency services will get delayed, and he already did the data gathering, and it's already posted to the public to see, so that when state need to do any type of improvements, the work is already done for them, so they're not wasting money. And basically, what the DOT should be doing is, you have road repair that's needed between, like, Kualua and Kaua, where you got potholes causing, you know, damaged tires to rims, which DOT may reimburse the person. You know, so you got the Waialua Bridge that always floods when it rains hard, and their remedy is, oh, we'll cut the trees back, but never a permanent solution, because every time it rains, the first thing that pops up on social media is, is Waialua open? Is it safe to drive through? Is it flooding? But every time you trot up, oh, we're just going to cut the trees back. And the DOT should be using the money more useful. And if they care about pedestrian safety, a correct tool to use for people crossing the street is those flashing lights, because.
Thank you, Jacob, please summarize.
So all I'm asking is, the DOT, talk to DOT to use tools correctly, because wasting money and things to not use properly frustrates every driver, every user on the road. Thank you.
If I could get your email, that would be great. I would like to reach out and see if I could collect all that information. I was able to get some of it, but I would like to further look into this. if I could collect all that information. I was able to get some of it, but I would like to further look into this.
No problem.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other questions from members here of, um, members of the public online that has any questions?
Hey, I have a question. I don't know how to, um,
Here, no problem Connie. Go right ahead. You have two minutes.
Yeah, um, I don't know if this pertains to what you guys are talking about with the environmental impact and all that down at Turtle Bay. But I live in Laie and HRI currently is trying to put in a new development along the ocean. Um, housing like, like thirty or so houses, new houses, and it's down a little private lane. Um, they claim they did an environmental impact study and I totally agree with the other person who said it, it, it doesn't mean anything because it doesn't, it's, it's, it's going to impact everything. We are not set up to actually, you know, have, have that much traffic, that many more people there. So I don't know who to contact, I guess, to see exactly what kind of environmental impact was, was like done. I, I just need to know who, who do, who do, you know, see what they actually did. Because by putting in it like a whole bunch of houses, HRI thinks just by widening the road, it, it, it's okay to build all those houses. And I don't know who told them that. Uh, if it's DPP, I don't know who to contact. I just need like information. Because they, they, they even have housing plans that they showed us. And currently it is a tsunami zone and the plans that we saw, the houses are not raised up the gra, up off the ground. Not any six feet, I think is what the, um, is what I was told is supposed to be. And so I, I don't know how they, they got their plans approved for houses that are not too cold for that area. And so if anybody can give me some information as to who I need to contact or what I need to do to see, you know, what really i- is, is happening there, I'd love it.
Absolutely. Um, I did leave my contact information in the chat. I'm not sure if you can see it on your end, but
Okay.
I, if you would like to send me an email with this, um, I can further look into it and
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, the sad thing with Laie is
Thank you Connie.
We are, I know, I'm sorry, but we are, we are a, we are like a little monopoly and, and
Connie, can you, um,
I have no say.
Okay, thank you. You have your two minutes. Thank you very much. If you want to talk directly with Gabriella, that, that'd be totally fine. Is there any other questions from members of the public here online? Okay, here, I'm seeing that we'll go back to in person, right ahead.
I wonder if the representative thinks that if the environmental impact statement um, from nineteen eighty-five and the one in nineteen, in two thousand and thirteen that was set aside and doesn't have a finding of no significant impact would mean that the SMA, the Special Management Permit should be revoked, invalidated or set aside until they get a proper environmental impact statement? Thank you.
Thank you. I did take note of that.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, thank you very much, Gabriella. We look forward to seeing you next month with the answers to those questions.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
True. Okay, moving on in our agenda. So we are at the presentation portion. This is a continuation from last month's meeting. Um, during last, between last month's meeting and today, there was a letter that was sent. Um, if most of you have seen the agenda, there was a quest, request by Ko'apakui Lima that the broader topic of Turtle Bay be removed from our agenda. Um, and that is for presentation A, which is what we ended on. Also for presentation B, there was a request by Ko'apakui Lima, who would draw the request for motion of support. There was a letter that was sent and since we don't have our Kohuku representatives here, if you could put that letter online and I will read it out loud for everyone. Okay, it's online. Chair and esteemed board members of Koholaua Neighborhood Board, Aloha Nui Kako. We Ko'apakui Lima respectfully request that items four A and four B on the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five agenda be deferred until a future meeting where we can attend in person. Due to unavoidable scheduling conflicts, we are unable to present at this meeting to participate in the discussion and present on these items. At the February board meeting, we listened to the diverse perspectives shared and have since engaged further with the broader community. It is clear that more time is needed for meaningful dialogue and a full understanding of the implications of the proposed development. At the request of board member Auntie Kelly Miller, we met with the Kulima North Shore Strategy Planning Committee on March fourth, twenty twenty-four and have scheduled a follow-up meeting in the coming weeks. Our initial discussion was productive and we look forward to continued dialogue to find common ground and mutual understanding. Given these ongoing conversations, we respectfully ask that the board take no action on the request for a letter of support at this time and instead defer these items until we have had further opportunities to meet with community members. We encourage the board to hear input from the broader community to gain a more comprehensive understanding of the community's mana'ou. In light of this, we are organizing additional grassroots meeting to ensure that all voices are heard and considered. For transparency, we will also be sharing this notice publicly. We sincerely appreciate the board's consideration of this request as well as the opportunity to present at last month's meeting. Mahalo Chairman Tongo for responsiveness. Um, to ensure clarity, we will be, uh, reiterate our request to defer any action on our presentation and the letter of support for our petition until we can return in person. Ko'apakui Lima Board, Lily Akaila, Jessica Dos Santos, Melissa, uh, what is it? Oh, no, he commit and Ramsey. So with that letter being read, uh, we have, um, we deferred it to public input and that's where we're starting up again. So the board, they have asked, requested that the board not take any action at this time, but because we ended in public testimony, I'm going to make an announcement. If there's anyone here to testify on this, or obviously there's no questions. It'd just be to say your piece. Um, you can do that now in two minutes. So I will open up for people in per, on per, in person. If they would like to say something, that's fine. Please proceed and then Catherine.
Good evening Chair, uh, board members, um, and residents of, uh, the North Shore. My name is Gino Suquana. I am the Executive Director of the Hawaii Building and Construction Trades Council, which represents eighteen construction trade unions throughout the state of Hawaii. Um, and collectively over thirty thousand of their, thirty thousand of them, their members. Uh, many of them live in your, your guys', uh, neighborhoods, you guys' communities. And, uh, we're here to, uh, show support for, uh, Rete Collective's, um, a responsible plan for Turtle Bay. Uh, and you know, it means a lot of work for our members and, uh, yeah, just, just wanted to, uh, acquire support for it. Thank you. Aloha.
Thank you. Um, board, sorry, members of the public, um, my apology because it is a continuation from the previous meeting, the, the public input was one minute, but you were less than one minute. So just wanted to let you know. But please proceed.
Um, I, I think it's, um, kind of surprising for the community to find that this is pretty dramatic, uh, change. And it would be nice if these meetings that are being discussed that have to do with what is going to be proposed, um, that they be put on an agenda and shared with the community so we can participate. Because we are in the dark, the only people that seem to know what's going on are people who are either in an organization that has a board and/or they're part of the building community. Um, because we, the public, cannot get information directly to know what is happening. And I think that even the construction industry and all the unions in this country would not support a project that would destroy the environment that they want their children to grow up in. And when we have a project that is twice as large as any other hotel resort in this state, it deserves to have guidance from the community, from our leaders, from the environmental impact statement. It should not go forward with just construction based on everybody's desires. We should have our laws followed. We should have public notice. We should be given an opportunity to put some input in there and save our environment and have our roads taken care of.
Thank you. Any other persons here, I mean, in person that would like to say something, please go ahead. You have one minute. Okay, so we'll go, this person here, uncle over here, then uncle.
Aloha Kako. I'm Malama Min. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Construction Alliance. Um, I represent five of the major construction trades, uh, the Hawaii carpenters union, operating engineers, the laborers, masons and bricklayers. Uh, together, my member unions represent over fifteen thousand working men and women in the Hawaii construction trades and this is statewide. Uh, I'm here to testify and support and give my input for the Turtle Bay, uh, proposal that's being put forth. Um, incidentally, I also worked at the LNR at the time, um, in the, uh, for the Legacy Lands Conservation Program, managing that program. So, um, I am, uh, uh, very informed about that, uh, environmental backstatement as well as the conservation instance. I work more on the conservation easement side to conserve Kavela Bay as well as, uh, Bird Sanctuary at Kunku Point. Um, and this proposal is within the area that was excluded from the conservation area. Sorry, three one minute. So we support this project because it will, um, provide important work and jobs and economic development, uh, for our members. But also it is a responsible development. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go here, uncle here, and then uncle in the front after. Hang on, hang on.
Maybe is there any foster? Just have you understand clearly that here you got the unions saying that they're ready, go ahead and break the laws that has already been passed and been brought out back in two thousand and ten and now along the way as to what's going on. It's really interesting to hear that the unions and the administration of, up there are saying that they concern about their workers. Well, we know for a fact, once this project is completed, those workers that you speak about, you guys represent are back on unemployment as well. And this has been going on for years as to what's going on. And the only people that cares about what's going on with the members are the members themselves. But the union ain't doing nothing to help them out clearly just by saying that they're going to have a job. And we know for a fact, once that job is completed at Turtle Bay, they're all back in the unemployment line. And that's what's going on clearly. Yet what's really going on too is that here we've got
Okay, uncle, please, please.
Our sponsors are saying that they're against what the law, what the law has indicated clearly. And what gets me clearly here is
Thank you, uncle. Could you please wrap it up?
Or just knowing the fact that what's going on clearly and that
Thank you.
This guy here is part of the planning department that goes upon allowing this kind of permits going on in the area of here.
Thank you very much for your, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
That is what's going on. And we need to point out clearly that the people's got to get involved, not just the fact of what's happening and what's going on. Yeah, I understand, but I understand. You can sit down, but no problem. We got it. We got it. All right.
Can we recess? Okay, we'll recess back in. Thank you very much. Please, you have one minute.
Aloha Ben Schifer. You know, back then, uh, we were with Dependawaho and we, the, the fight was fought and all the groups got together and the, there was a consensus. The state came in, put up fifty million dollars to make sure that there was a stop to it. Five hotels and no more. They could have won a hundred hotels if they wanted to, but five was the limit. And now they're going to go with four, maybe less. I don't, I'm not sure. But that was a limit and the state, our taxpayers, uh, our money were used so that the development would end. Right? And that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other members of the public here that would like to testify in person? Please proceed. You have one minute. Um, if, if you've already testified on it, it's probably best if you, but up to you, up to you. I mean, okay.
I'm a David Stan. I'm supporter of this project and the reason why. I think the developers are really, really, um, engaged in the community. They have done so, so far as they, as they purchased it and they have, uh, moved in a lot of ways. Uh, I, I really support this project because I think it's really good for the community. We, uh, will gain a lot from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other members here in the public that would like to testify? Okay, here and in scene and we'll move to online. I, Jacob, I see your hand up. Please proceed. You have one minute on this item.
Okay, I just want to do a quick comment. If Turtle Bay owners were really good stewards, they never appeared to any of our meetings that we have that is talking about it. Only thing we see is the construction unions and unions that is part of the project instead of the owners themselves. So if they were good stewards, why are, why are they not showing up? If they're willing to help communicate with the community, now come any of the time we have to talk about Turtle Bay, they're not here. We always have to try find out to somebody else and they're not really showing any type of communication to the community from, directly from them themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments from, or comments from members of the public here online? Okay, we'll go to in person. So, well, you were well, that, no, there's, sorry, there's no answering the questions. Any other members of the public? So, okay, so board members, um, there is a request from Ko'apakui Lima to defer and not take any action on this item. Um, is this procedural question? Yes.
If you chose to set aside, um, the, their decision, you know, ask to do, wait till next time, could the board at least ask the planning and permitting to stop issuing any more permits since they just issued another one? And, you know, I, I really mean this sincerely from the bottom of my heart. This is very stressful for our community. We need to have some peace. And this is not bringing peace to us to have to worry. And we got to look every day to find out if there's going to be some more things done because there's no input, ex put back and forth. There's nothing for us. And if you guys could at least do that, at least write a letter and ask the planning and permitting department to just hold off until we all have some better settlement because like the person just said, the only person that knows what, the only people that know what's going on are the developers and the building, uh, industry. None of us know.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments for people from the public in regards to this item? Okay, so board members, um, we have a request to defer this item, um, until they can come back. So not take any action or to defer, I mean, you don't have to take any action. We just let it go. And then they definitely can come back. You don't have to do an official motion to defer, but you would just wait until they come back. Most likely it would probably be after this board, another board kicks, kicks controlling in July. But is there any actions that the board would like to take? So yes, so the request from Ko'apakui Lima was to defer. So there's two ways you can do it, by just not doing anything, not taking any actions, which is what they recommend, or deferring the action or making a motion to defer. So, yes.
Sorry, Rebecca Carlson, procedural question. Do, does the board ever get a chance to discuss things?
So the board can discuss things if there's a motion. So if there was a motion to defer, then we would go into, and there was a second, then we would go into discussion and then the board can do a back discussion. But there has to be action taken. So, um, that's what it is. And then after the action, there could be a vote, but you have to have a first and a second. To discuss things, right? But that, that's how the proceeding, that's how it will play out. So the board members, I'm, I'm leaving this up to you guys because you're the board. I, I just run the meetings.
Okay, so we, I would like to make a motion that we defer, uh, you know, uh, this until further notice.
Okay, so I need a second. There anyone on the board that wants to make a second? They have a second. Okay, now we're in discussion. So the motion before is to defer these items. And this is just for one A, the presentation portion. We have to do the next one as well, which is also requested to defer. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion between board?
Yes, I, I would say, um, we spent all last month on this. We're spending again another nine. Now we're going to defer it to a new board and it starts Now we're gonna defer it to a new board and it starts all over, that doesn't make sense to me.
But, for me is, you know, I, I think maybe they, they did have, I mean, this has been going on for a while, and maybe, you know, this is the, the only way that maybe we can get more information to the, the people who are saying that they, they never hear about it, they hear about it and they don't. Maybe this is one way of getting more information to them about what's going on. And I'm not sure if it may be because of the new board coming on, and like Dottie is saying is that we're, you know, they've waited so long and now we're gonna wait another, you know, so I, I think it's better that we defer, so that's just my
Please take my, sorry, in my comment in regard, maybe it would be in the board, it's really up to Kupakulima when they wanna come back, it could be before June, but I just, it's like I don't see that happening, but it is possible. So, any other discussion? No, this is board business, any other discussion? Do I have a motion to close discussion? This is not community input, uncle, this is a board business thing, so we're going through procedure. Do I have a motion to close discussion and call for the vote? Motion to close, alright. We have a motion to close, the, the action before the board is to defer. Go, call vote.
When I call your name, please say yes, no, or abstain. Uh, Tucy? Matt? Michael? Okay, um, Sutton?
Stane.
Oh, she said abstain?
I abstain, the parties are not there to answer questions and they asked to defer in good faith, I feel like they, we, we should continue and defer when they're ready to come back.
Oh, no, this is to defer.
I, yeah, but
Oh, okay.
Yeah, whether or not I vote or not, I mean, I'm not gonna
Okay, Kelly Paddock? Abstain? Rebecca Carlson? Um, Ponte? Okay. Uh, Kellum Miller? Yes. Oh, yes.
Okay, so motion dies, so action dies, right, so we're, we're here, so we can either take action or move on. Is there a motion to take action? Okay, so we can postpone this, right, okay? And that, so that would be the motion, I mean, well, that would be the act, we're just gonna move on, move it on. And then we're going over to the Kupakulima Letter of Support. Because there was a question, the request, well, the presenter is not here and the request for them to withdraw is not here. Is there a motion to defer, or would you just like to breeze on by this and move forward? Well, yes. Presenter's not here, that, that would be Sunny Unga. Okay? Okay, so when I, you have to be very specific in your motion, is it defer to next meeting or just defer until they hear back? This is Presentation B, Letter of Support for Kupakulima, this was, the presenter was Sunny Unga, one of our board members. So this is for the letter, Kupakulima has asked to withdraw their request for motion of support. So, you guys just wanna push it on the side, or you're gonna take an action to defer? That's the question.
If I could ask, what is the difference? Yeah.
There's no, there's no really difference, nobody's taking action about it, that's why I'm trying to figure out.
Okay, yeah, because we would definitely like them to come back and present the letter, that they, their revised letter, and then we can decide whether if we want to support this letter or not, that's, that's what I want to happen.
So, it'll be up to them if they wanna come back, right? So that's what we're, because I'm not gonna put it on the agenda if they're not coming back. Does that make sense? I just wanna make sure that's clear, yeah? Yeah. Okay, good, so we moved through those things, whoo, we got through that. Now, moving on to Oceanside Assisted Living, presenter Mark Hashem.
Hi, everybody, my name is Mark Hashem, do you have the, the presentation? Okay, I wanna, my name is Mark Hashem, I represent the partnership that's proposing the Oceanside project. Before we start, I would like to go to the very last slide, and you go, we're gonna go backwards all the way to the last one. They go one more up. Okay, there, so, I just want to let everybody know, this project, or this, the Oceanside Assisted Living, is an existing building, that's what it looks like now. We're not proposing to build anything, okay, or expand on it, other than parking. Like, you can go up one more, so, well, this is what it looks like on the outside from the road, you can see it on Google Maps, I took that off of Google Maps. And you can go one more up, this is, kind, this is like the front entrance, this is the parking lot at the top. So, just to let everybody understand that we're not proposing a new project or to bring anything new or expand on it. We're only requesting to change, there, there's a development agreement now on place that says this has to be assisted living, we just want to use it, allow it. We just want to change the development agreement to allow families, and that's it. And it's, there's a requirement that it has to be affordable housing, we're not gonna touch that. Everything else remains the same, it's just from senior assisted living to families, so we, that's the basis, okay? Go back to the beginning, that's more pictures of everything. So this is the Oceanside Assisted Living Center, it was, if you don't know, it was shut down about three years ago. Right, so, you can go to the next slide, so this is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give you a brief description, the history of the project, and what we plan to do or what we're asking, and what changes are needed, and then I'll open up for question. So the facility is right up the street, not too far from here, about like a mile or two miles. So currently, it's a, the building is approximately, approximately ninety thousand square feet. There's a hundred studios, six one bedrooms and nine two bedrooms. And it consists of a hundred fifteen units in total. We're not gonna go any bigger, if anything, we're gonna go smaller because we're gonna combine some of those studios together to make two and three bedroom units to families can't live in a studio, so we're gonna create more two and three bedroom units, that's so, it'll probably come down to about a hundred units in total. So next slide. So this is the history, the building was put in, was built in nineteen ninety-five as an assisted living center. There was several operators that operated the facility up, what, what is that, thirty years now? There is, five of them took over, five of them went bankrupt. So, as an assisted living center, it does not, it's not a viable option. And there's people that says we, we should keep it an assisted living center. I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't think I'm smarter than the last five organizations that came, so I'm not gonna, yeah, and that plus, that's not what we do, so, I'm not gonna go tackle that. So, but that's kind of the timeline and detail, one organization came, they went, they went under, they sold to the next, the next guy came in, they tried to do, they tried to run it again, they went under, the next organization came in, they went bankrupt, whatnot, all the way to the last, the, the last operator was Arbor Chen, True Care, and he was the one that was eventually shut down by the Department of Health. Next slide, and you can skip that. This is essentially what we want to change, within the development agreement, there is one phrase, you can't see it there, it's in one of the pages. Basically, it states the facility needs to be used as a senior assisted living center. That's within the development agreement, and what we're asking to do is to change that to families, and we're asking for the board for the, for your support to change the development agreement. We went to the city and they said they want to make sure that the, the neighborhood or the community supports the project first. And that's why we are here. So this is just the first step. We, once the board will, we're, we're asking the board to vote in support. If you do, we will have to return to the board, because when we come back to the board, we will, we will go through the city's process of changing the development agreement to allow families, and then the board will have to accept that development agreement in the future. So, there would be another vote some six months to a year. So, it has to go through the city council and the whole city process. Next slide. The real big, well, not big change, but the one thing that in all disclosure, we're gonna ask to add sixty parking, sixty stalls of parking, so just another surface area of parking. And that's, that's basically the only change that we're gonna do, or any addition that we're gonna do. The facility currently sits on eight acres, it only uses a small footprint of that eight acres, so there's ample space for maybe a there's farms is somewhere else, but anyways, that's, we're only asking for a small surface parking area, and go to the next slide. I believe, now we're going back to the picture. So I'm available for any questions if you have any question.
Questions from board members?
Hi, Dottie Kelly Pettick, question?
Yes.
I'm a senior.
Yes.
And let's say I qualify for affordable housing, can I get a unit there?
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't bar seniors from coming in, yes.
Okay. I did have another question. I'll come back.
Yeah, so, I was wondering, is, is this property up above the tsunami inundation zones?
I don't know specifically, but I believe so, because it's pretty far back.
Yeah, it is, it is pretty far back, is there, I don't know if this is kind of long down in the future, have you considered at all, since it is far back and there's a large area, it's being a possible place for other people to evacuate to in an emergency?
Personally, I would, I have no problems with that, in the event of some kind of, in the event of some kind of disaster, yes, I think everybody should go to wherever you can. I would be more than welcome to open the facility. Another thing too is, I would be welcome to having the neighborhood board there, from what I understand, they used to meet there. The, whoa, the Punnu Community Association met there, right? So, when we have this, we're doing, we have another project in Chinatown, and we did the same thing. So it's always better when you have a lot of activity in the, in the facility. So we would welcome the board to be there, the Punnu Association, there's a lot of extra space in the building that I think the community should be using.
I have a question, so the Punnu Community Association, they know about this?
Yes, we went to the, the Punnu Community Association and they voted, I think it was N three in support.
Um, do you know if there's any Kulianga landowners in the back there?
Aloha, kaimi puno hanohano. So, we are stewards of that aina, and so, yes, we are changing and trying to farm the front part. The vision for me and my family is really to teach everyone how to live off of the aina. And so that's what we're really trying to do, because that structure was previously put on the land by my grandfather and his siblings. We are just trying to use it in a manner and not just have it sit there. And so, there was other options that were given to our family, and we feel like this one is not just good for our family, but also the community, and so, yeah.
My next question is, so every, everyone is, is, would be able to go there to, if they wanted to live there, they could get a house there? Or is this for a certain age group?
No, well, no, we're getting rid of the age restriction. So, if anybody can go there, you need to qualify, it's income restricted to, right now, the development agreement says eighty percent of AMI and below.
Okay.
Our current intent is to use the low-income housing tax credit, which will reduce that even more to sixty percent of the area median. So, if you qualify, yes, you can go.
Can you, can you kind of, eighty percent, sixty percent AMI, what does that translate into?
So, a studio would be, I think it's
From, from an income standpoint, what is eighty percent?
I don't know what, I don't know what the income range is, I think this, from the studios, about fourteen fifty, for the studio, one bedroom is maybe fifteen fifty, and a three, two, two or three, about eighteen hundred, I think, for a two or three bedroom. Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't recall right offhand, it's about fourteen hundred dollars for a studio.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, my other question was, you're not filling in the fish ponds, right?
No, they are, no, no.
No, okay, no, I'm, I'm glad to hear, Amy, that you all are gonna use them for your family and for growing food, so that's, that's a really big plus. Thank you, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Right ahead?
Yeah, I just
Um, so, this land was given to one of our kupuna, and he was a warrior with Kamama. And so, every battle they won, they, he was gifted land, but in, in that sense, he was gifted land to help and feed the people of that community. That was the, if we're gonna go back to the very beginning of when that stewardship began, that was the purpose of it. And so, with my generation, we're really, really trying to bring back that same teaching.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, board members online? Okay, members of the public here in person? Okay, we'll go here, then we'll go chalk on the front.
My name is Elgin Onaga, and I'm starting a farm league for the youth. The youth are gonna compete as a high school against a high school, against a high school, just like football teams and baseball teams, who can grow the most? The high schools will be the teams, and we will teach the kids how to make a hundred thousand dollars a year. And if we get a thousand kids making a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's a hundred million dollars a year. They can buy back all that ag land and put it in the local kids' pockets. And we have to teach them this stuff, otherwise, they're not gonna do anything but get more trouble.
Thank you, uncle in the front? You can use the microphone over here.
Yeah, this sounds like a great program that you folks are proposing out here as well. I'm just wondering how, how much of the community is gonna be involved in what's going on as well? And so, just knowing that, you, you point out the fact how much it's really gonna be costing as well, but yet nothing hasn't been put down in black and white as to what what should be out there as well. My concern is knowing that because of what Hanohan Valley has provided in that area there, how much of that how much of that development will be for the people of Poonalu, Ula, La'ee, and then along the Kola Loa area as well? Yeah, and that's what my concern is knowing for, and the respect that I have for Hana Hana and what they have done for all these years as well. So that's, that's my concern as well.
Well, I can answer that. First of all, we have, have to state that we cannot discriminate. We live in a society that we cannot discriminate. You cannot say, right, you're not from here, you can't, you can't, you can't come. However, I will come back, well, we will come back and ask for your support to help fill up the facility. Because if it will be a first come, first served basis, but if the only way you can get an application is coming, walking to the facility, it's very hard for people on the internet to apply. So we will come, I shouldn't be saying that because it's recorded.
You're on the record now, so.
I know, I shouldn't be saying that. I mean, but I will be coming to you, back to your support to help spread the word to the community that please apply.
Evelyn Lane. It's, it's so exciting to hear that there's going to be a project to help the people in this community who really have been homeless for so long. There are so many people that really need a place to live. And for the construction guys, this is a project that I can really support you on.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the community? Okay, right here.
So Shannon, look, you're not overly cool, you know, no Poonalu maya. So, uh, we have, uh, our association has heard lengths, lengths on this issue. And we have actually supported, um, uh, the Hana Hana family in their endeavors to move on with the verbiage. And with all these comments that are coming up, the main key that we had to come across was to change the verbiage. And I just wanted to state that the community had an opportunity to support the Kupuna Housing. And, uh, Poonalu and the family stepped up to change verbiage to allow this to happen and the supported construction. And what happened was the community did not, um, meet the needs to have employees to keep the facility open. And I would like to encourage our community, not only when they support projects in Poonalu or Raladan Kuku, to really support that your children will work in these facilities. So BYU-HOBYU does not have a health sciences at all program. Top to bottom, they got rid of social work. They got rid of a lot of things. So if you want Poonu housing, you should encourage your kids. This project was built when I was in elementary, Hau'ul Elementary, and that's how old I am. And what I'm saying is, if you want children of this area to stay here, give us a chance to go to college at BYU, then I wouldn't have gone to town and worked in town. Mahalo.
Thank you. All right, questions or comments, um, from members of the community in person? Okay, we'll go to online. Catherine Heath, I believe your hand is up. Please proceed.
Yes, I typed it in. I, I'm glad to hear the neighbors and everybody are sympathetic with it. My concern is what about the back road, which is, connects the wells and has various cameras around the wells facilities? I believe some people whose farm is back into that space also may have keys to it. Um, I think it must be up fifty feet from the back of the building. Um, children are curious creatures. I'm kind of curious what kind of discussion you've had with the state? Or is it the Board of Water in regards to that road? Um, are you even aware, you must be aware it's there. So I'm, you know, you say children, but it's certainly a place for children to get up to mischief. And it also might be an escape route in a real tsunami situation.
I don't, I did not have any conversation with the Board of Water Supply or anybody else. That's outside of the scope of the project and I don't know how to address that.
Well, as a longtime school teacher, children and youth will utilize that road. If you put a facility back there, and that might be something that needs to be addressed ahead of time. That's just a public concern.
Well, thank you for that comment. We'll look, we'll keep.
Just like we have the trails in Ha'ula that go up to the water, you know, the trails, it's known fondly. You know, there are places where youth have nothing else to do, they will find things to do. All right, thank you.
Okay, any, sure, we have board member.
Hi, Dottie Kelly Pettick. We focus a lot on emergency preparedness here in this district. And I really recommend that, um, given the number of people that will be living there, that you have, you look into creating an emergency preparedness plan for that facility. So that people are not surprised, uh, that when the road is closed or when a disaster happens, they will know what to do.
Okay. I would hope you would be helping on that plan because that's outside of my expertise.
We're always helpful in that regard and we care very much about our Poonalu neighbors.
I know one of the reasons that that place wasn't, um, successful is because it's so far set back on the road. And a lot of the people who lived there had no transportation, except for maybe a van that would take them out occasionally. And it was too far for them to walk to the, to the, to the bus stop. Will you be trying to encourage the city to have a bus come down there to help people go in and out? Which is some of the things that on this side of the island, we don't do enough because many of the buses go all through Kanioli and they go through lots of neighborhoods and different communities. That would be a really good place for a bus to go back to.
I would love to get the bus to go back there, but I don't know if I have that much hold with the government, with the mayor, but, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from members of the public here in person? Okay, online, board members. You good? Okay, so we're done with this presentation portion. I know that our Poonalu representative, Lauren Batangi, is not present, but she did, um, distribute a letter to all of our board members. And it's also on the Google Drive for the public to view, um, from the Poonalu Community Association in support of this project. Um, so board members, um, most likely, I think for next month, I believe that probably Board Member Matang will probably submit a letter for support. Uh, but we can move on to the next, uh, presentation. You take action and support this right now with a vote if you'd like, or we can move on. So, okay. Motion to support, do I have a second? Second, perfect, all right. Um, we'll call vote, right? Well, any objections? Any reservations? I look online, Representative Greer, just want to make sure, any, any objections or reservations?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, appreciate that. Hearing none, Chair votes aye, this, um, the board votes in support of this project. So we look forward to having a, a letter for board business. Air clap. Okay, moving on in our agenda. Okay, now we get to switch gears. Sewer increased presentation by Director Roger Babcock. Babcock.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Manatoga, board members. My name is Roger Babcock. I'm with the Department of Environmental Services for the city. Environmental Services takes care of sanitation for the whole city. So we do sewer and refuse island wide. So that takes, that takes a lot of people, um, and a lot of facilities. So we have about eight hundred people that work for the city in the sewer division and another four hundred that work in sanity, in refuse, collection, disposal, age power, landfill, et cetera. The sewer enterprise is fee, is a fee for service operation. So in other words, real property tax is collected from everybody and that pays for all services such as, uh, first responders, uh, parks, every other service except for sewer and water. Those are fee for service, special fund operations. So on the sewer part, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight, um, there, uh, we have to estimate our revenue requirements to operate our operations. And then we have to set fees to generate that amount of revenue each year. In the wastewater operation, sewer operation, we have two thousand one hundred miles of sewer pipes, seventy-one wastewater pump stations and nine wastewater treatment plants. The, uh, the closest one to here is La'ee, which serves basically just the La'ee community. And then after that, going back towards Ka'lu, we've got the Ikaheu Treatment Plant, which is a regional treatment plant for that area. There's also Kohuku Treatment Plant, uh, and, and as well as one in Haleiwa. The, um, so, so anyway, what I'm here to talk about today is, um, our sewer fees. Sewer fees, uh, for those of you that are on sewer, were last increased on July first of twenty sixteen. So it'll be nine years on July, on July first. As you know, costs of everything have gone up over the last nine years. We've given some raises to our employees, uh, like all public workers, the union workers. We have, electricity has gone up significantly, as you know, diesel fuel, all consumables that we, that we pay for. So the, in the sewer operations, there are two types of costs that we have. One is operation and maintenance, and that's the people and the consumables. And the other is debt service. So the sewer operation issues its own debt, uh, for our construction projects. So the city issues general obligation bonds to build fire stations and stadiums and Blaisdell Centers and whatever else they're going to build and pave the roads. Sewer, to do all of those things I mentioned, we issue our own debt, just like Board of Water Supply, they issue their own separate debt. So what that means is we have debt service on, on our debt, which is principal and interest. So it's kind of like a thirty-year mortgage. We issue debt every year and then there's a repayment plan over, over thirty years. So we have to cover that principal and interest as part of our operating expenses. Currently, about fifty percent of operating, of our operating expenses are operation and maintenance and fifty percent is debt service. So that's kind of how it works. So the handout that you have here, and I'm sorry for the members of the public, there's more back on the table back there if you want. It's also available, all this stuff's available on our website. Honolulu.gov slash E N V. You can find, uh, this information and lots more about the sewer fees. So, you know, our operations involve, yeah, thanks, there's the, there's the colorful handout there. We have to operate everything, but we also have to maintain and upgrade all of our infrastructure. So we have long-term plans to operate, uh, maintain, upgrade and expand where necessary, but also to continue to keep up with new regulations, which come out every, almost every year. We have new regulations that we have to comply with from EPA and the State Department of Health. So to do all these things does take quite a bit of, uh, planning and, and money. And you can see that, if, if you're able to see that, that the, uh, our capital program is, is quite large. Capital program means construction projects. And over the fifteen-year period that's shown there, twenty twenty-five through twenty forty, we have ten billion dollars of construction projects. Now, as I mentioned before, we fund this with debt. So that doesn't mean we bring in ten million, ten billion dollars of sewer fees. We don't pay cash. We get a loan, it's like buying a house. We don't pay cash for the house, get a loan and we pay it off over thirty years. Because this is long-term infrastructure. It lasts forever essentially. We have to maintain it and upgrade it along the way, but it does last essentially forever. There will always be a treatment plant at Ikaheu. There will always be a treatment plant in La'ee. We have to upgrade it, maintain it, but it stays there forever. So we have proposed sewer fee increases. It's now before the city council. Uh, we've proposed a ten-year, uh, rate package, as was kind of shown in that other graph as well. And so what is requested, what is needed, uh, based on our revenue requirement projections is to raise the fees by, fees by nine percent each year over the next six years. And then to get up to ten years, they decrease to eight, seven, six and five percent in those, in those other years. So that's the amount of additional revenue that's needed to fund our, our projects and our debt service and our, and our people and our, all of our expenses. How much that actually means for someone's bill depends on how much water he uses. And so I'll explain. Your, your sewer bill is based on two components. There's a base charge, fixed charge, that's the same for everybody every month. And then there's a volumetric charge, which is dependent upon how much water you use. So just like on the, you know, your Board of Water Supply and water and your sewer bill looks like this, right? You got water on the left, sewer on the right. And the wa, on the left, it tells you how much water you use. That number is used to calculate part of your sewer bill, the volumetric part. The base charge though is fixed. It's, it's seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. It's been that number since July first of twenty sixteen. We're proposing to increase that, of course. And the volumetric charge is four dollars and sixty-three cents per thousand gallons. It doesn't matter how many thousands you use, it stays that same number, four dollars and sixty-three cents. Whereas on the water side, the water gets more expensive the more that you use. It becomes much more expensive. And that's to promote water conservation. And because water is very valuable, it shouldn't be wasted. So if you use more, you're free to do that, but you're going to pay more, a lot more. So one of the things to mention is that, um, we are proposing to change the proportion of the bills that's fixed versus volumetric. Currently, it's about seventy-five percent fixed fee and only twenty-five percent volumetric, right? Seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents and the average bill is a hundred dollars. Most of it is the base charge. Moving forward, based upon community input that we've had and a stakeholder advisory group that we ran all last year, there's, the proposal is to make it fifty-fifty. So the base charge will stay the same for several years, but the volumetric charge will go up. That means that people will have greater control over their bill. If you save water, it will be used, it will be more valuable. It will reduce your bill more than it does now. So that's part of the proposal. The other proposal is we, is we will have a customer assistance program. So this is in the, is, is all, is all part of the package. And that will, um, try to assist those, uh, who would be most impacted by the sewer fee increases that we propose. Uh, we're modeling it after the rental and utility relief program that Office of Economic Revitalization, OER, ran during the COVID, during COVID. That's based on eighty percent AMI or less qualifies for a credit on the base charge. And it's going to be between twenty and twenty-five dollars per month. So if you look at the, uh, what the, uh, charges are, you'll see that that could have a, a big impact for those that would qualify. The, and just if, um, I, I've given a lot of numbers, um, and so, but I'm happy to answer questions. The, but I did want to point out that how much you pay and how much your fees increase does depend on how much water you use. The, so some folks use not very much water. And we would call that a low water user. Folks who use only two thousand gallons a month of water, which is ten percent of customers. Currently have a bill that's about eighty-five dollars. In the first year, their bill goes up, uh, two dollars and fifty cents approximately per month. The next year, it goes up another two dollars and fifty cents per month. So the increases are quite small if you don't use very much water. And over the ten years, their cumulative increase in their rate that they pay is seventy percent. So it doesn't, it doesn't double. To get up to doubling, you have to use six thousand gallons a month. You use six thousand gallons a month, which is what we call the median. That means fifty percent of people use that amount or less and fifty percent use more than that. That's six thousand gallons a month. Uh, currently they're paying a hundred dollars, ninety-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, and the next year it goes up, uh, seven dollars and fifty cents. And each year it goes up about that same amount, about seven dollars and fifty cents. And each year, it goes up about that same amount, about $7.50. So cumulatively, over a long period of time, 10 years, it adds up to quite a bit. But year to year, it's, it's not, these are not huge increases. 70% of people use 9,000 gallons a month or less, and their bills are going to go up by $12 a month. Now, when you get out to very high water users, their bills go up a lot more because of this shift to charging more for the water itself as opposed to the base charge. So some folks, if, at the highest water users, the highest 2%, which is a little difficult to see on the chart there, they're using 30,000 gallons a month, 15 times as much as a low water user. But presumably, they could, they could conserve water and use less. But their bills are going to go up 200% over the same time period. And that is intentional. It is designed that, so that we don't overuse water and we conserve water for everybody and for the future. So I, I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions at this point, and appreciate you giving me the time to, to talk tonight.
Kelly, very good.
So you're actually building a sewer plant?
We, yeah, thank you for that question. We're, we aren't building any new sewer plants. We are upgrading the, the really big project that's shown on here is the Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade. So that is a, an upgrade. It's not an expansion, but it's to add full secondary-level treatment, which it currently doesn't have. And in 2010, the city, after many years of litigation with the EPA, the Department of Justice, the State Department of Health, and several environmental groups, entered into negotiations and came to a settlement and agreed to a 25-year plan to do upgrades to the system. Two parts of that needed to be done. The first part needed to be, was the collection system needed to be done in 10 years. That was by 2020, that was completed. Then the second part was to upgrade the Eva Beach Treatment Plant, Hona Uli Uli. That needed to be done by last year, and it was completed. And they were given the full 25 years till 2035 to finish the Sand Island project. And so that is that big project. So it is a very large project because it's a large treatment plant. And so we're on schedule. The project has started, construction has started, but there's still a lot left to do to finish that project.
So how does that affect the, the communities on this end? How does that affect this community? Because I know in Laie, we're on the sewer treatment plant. And so I, I'm guessing that that's exactly what you guys are going to plan for this side too?
Yeah, so everybody pays the same sewer rates, no matter, you know, where we live. So the costs of, of maintaining and upgrading the entire system is spread out equally among all the rate pairs.
So this is because the people who have cesspool are no longer going to have cesspool?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So currently, folks that have cesspools that are not connected to the sewer don't pay a sewer fee. So they're not impacted by these sewer fees. We do have projects, though, to expand the sewer system in some areas where there are cesspools. The first big project with respect to that is in Eva Beach, where there's about almost 1,000 homes in one neighborhood that are right next to a sewer line, pretty much, where we're proposing to add sewers. And then they would have to connect, and they'd become sewer customers. There are projects between here and Kailua. There are a few smaller ones and other ones all over the island. Right now, we have 18 sewer improvement district projects in our six-year CIP plan. But they, they do not affect, of course, all, or not even about a third perhaps of the cesspools on the island.
Dottie Kelly Paddock. Okay, so let's, tell me straight out. You're not building a sewer system in Koalaloa, are you?
Um.
Another one? I know, I know you, there's one in Laie.
Oh, yeah.
But the rest of us are on septic.
Yes. So it depends, it depends on the neighborhood. We, so we have, we have facility planning going on all around the island. So right now, we have, so I can't say for sure, but we do not plan to build new treatment plants. There's one exception to that, and that is in Haleiwa, because there is one very small wastewater treatment plant there that we call Paala Kai, near the market, Snow, Snow Puffies, right? That place. There, that is a very, very small treatment plant that was part of a small development that was built, and then it was turned over to the city. Only 200 homes connected, but there are several thousand other homes in the area that could be connected. Not sure when that will happen. We have the study going on now. We would need a different location for the plant, but we do have property in the area. So there's, it's very likely that there's going to be a lot of connections in the Haleiwa area. Similarly, in Kahuku, there's a, there's a, a project, a, a study going on there, and Waimea. There's definitely going to be some connections in Waimea, the beach lots and some of the other areas. All those things, though, take time. There's a lot of planning. You have to get the money approved and, and a lot of community outreach to get, get, you know, support from the community, make sure that they, that they want it. But there are a lot of folks in between who will likely not be connected to an existing treatment plant because it's too far away, or new treatment plants built. It's just really expensive to, to do that.
So in, just to summarize, you are probably going to be building a treatment plant at some point, at some level, in Kahuku, and you'll continue your treatment plant in Laie.
The treatment plant?
And you've got, of course, Haleiwa. But Ha'ula, Honolulu, Ha'ava, no treatment plants.
No treatment plants. That, it's not in the plan right now.
Right.
Or in, in any kind of a long-term plan that we have, yeah.
Okay. So those communities, those people don't pay sewer tax, tax of any kind?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So you should have just gotten a Laie community association, you know? No, that's, we're happy to have you, Roger. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. And yeah, appreciate your, your time. We, we have a mandate from city council to attend every, to, to come out to every single neighborhood board. And so I appreciate, appreciate your, your patience with me.
Questions from other board? Okay, all right, we'll go to members of the public in person. He's coming up. We'll go until we hear the uncle.
Evelyn Lane. So you're going to build something in Kahuku? Or you're studying the Kahuku and where would it connect with it? And, and what, what areas are you thinking about?
Thank you. So there, we already have a treatment plant in Kahuku. And so there, there is capacity to make more connections. It's really right in the Kahuku area to still be able to handle those flows, really get, get some people off of cesspools and get, you know, good treatment at the treatment plant. There will also be a recycled water project associated with that. So we need to reuse the water. Right now, there's injection wells. And so we intend to, if we can develop enough reuse capacity or customers, then we would intend to not use the injection wells anymore and just recycle the water. So that's a big project. It is a small treatment plant, but when you start to do the additional treatment for recycling and then a distribution system and all that kind of stuff, it is fairly expensive. But that is our long-range plan, and that's, that's what we're going to try to do. Thanks. And also, you know, just so you know, the Kahuku plant is an important site where waste haulers, sep, your cesspool pumpers and septic tank pumpers, take waste to the Kahuku Wastewater Treatment Plant. We have a separate, essentially a separate treatment plant there just to receive those hauled wastes. Most hauled wastes are taken to Hona Uli Uli in Eva Beach, even from here. And in the fut, and some goes to Wahihua, and some goes to Sand Island, of course, too, and some goes actually to Kailua also. So there's multiple places where the folks that do the pumping take, take waste. And they do pay, they have to pay a fee. And actually, the fee is the same as the, as the wastewater charge. So essentially, you're paying the same thing as if you were connected, but you're, you're only pumping a little bit. You're not pumping like all your, all your waste there. Most of it's discharging into the ground, but, so that, that's the way the fees are set, is same as the, as if it was coming to us in the sewer.
Okay, uncle here in the front, you had a question?
Yeah, my question is, knowing that with all the developments that they're proposing on this area, what, what kind of program do you folks are coming up with, continuing with that as well? And just knowing the fact that the infrastructure that we have now, knowing that what's going on, we're just working the fact of how it's going to be able to address, you know, all these new developments that wants to come into the area as well.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks for the question. So, so development, you know, requires permits, of course. And if there's a, if there's a treatment plant, if it's near a treatment plant in our, in our collection system in town somewhere, or even in Kailua or Kanaui or wherever, then they'd be required to connect to the sewer. And there would be an assessment whether there's capacity or not. If there isn't capacity, they won't get a permit unless there's a project that can be done, that they would pay for, to increase the capacity. So that would be one sort of situation. Some places, there's plenty of capacity. So all the development going on in Kakaako and in town and stuff, there's, we have plenty of sewer capacity, you know, for that. One exception is the Aloha Stadium, the new Aloha Stadium project. There isn't capacity for that. Projects have to happen, and they'll be helping fund those. So out here, if we talk about, there is a, there are, there is the private treatment plant also. And, and so the capacity associated with the project you were talking about earlier with the hotels and stuff, they will have to upgrade or increase capacity in order to handle the flows from, from those projects. Otherwise, they won't get a building permit. In other communities where there are no sewers, then that's governed by the State Department of Health Wastewater Branch for the onsite permits. So the same thing as a cesspool or, or septic tank or whatever. You have to go to the state, get, get your permit there for your onsite system. So as long as there's enough area, you know, land area, generally, you can get, you can get the permit, you can get a permit to build with an onsite, with an onsite system. But you can't get an onsite system if you're in a sewered area. You have to connect to the sewer. Yep.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public here in person? Ben, ready?
Ben Schifer. I just had a couple of questions. One was the consent decree that was for Magic Garden. Is that finished already? Was it ongoing? On going, yeah. Number two was that a number of years ago, I was with an organization and we were looking at different countries or nations, there were technology, they've improved from the system that we have, which is like something 50 years old or something, right? And I was just wondering, how, how can we update our system so that it's more efficient, more useful, and nothing goes out in the, in the ocean? And, and that's one of the things we're looking at. What country has those things? Can they have it already? And how can we bring it here? So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that question. So I think it, it really depends on whether we're talking about small systems or, or large systems. There's all kinds of different technologies for onsite systems now, where you can do evaporation and you can have nothing discharged into the environment. And some of those have been studied and validated and proven here, and they're approved for use. When we get to the larger treatment plants like Sand Island, for example, or, or Kailua, when we do new process, essentially a big upgrade like Sand Island, we went through an exhaustive study over two years period with consultants. We have a big consulting team on that project. And we evaluated all technologies that are available worldwide. And we actually got, we actually visited plants in Europe and Asia to find out the best thing for us. And we selected a process that is super innovative and new. This will be the largest one in the United States. It's Holland's technology, Netherlands technology, it's, it's patented, and it's called aerobic granular sludge. And it's very efficient in terms of aeration, low aeration, meaning less electricity. It's very efficient in terms of biologically, the, the process. And it is a, it's a smart system, so it has an AI controller that learns and, and continues to self-calibrate and become better and better over time, as well as anticipating storm flows and adapting to that faster than we can as human operators. So it's not completely automated, we still have operators. And, but it basically gives advice, and the operator then has to okay to the changes. So we are very much doing that with all of our systems, making them better, smarter, more efficient. It's really important to us. We also do now energy generation from our own waste. So we can offset some of our electricity use by making electricity from the methane that we generate in the, in the treatment process. So that's another big effort, you know, that's underway. It's really only feasible at our larger treatment plants. The smaller treatment plants are just kind of too small, the economics don't work out. Thanks for that question.
Another question here. Dottie Kelly Paddock. What kind of system is it that will clean up all the water in, in, in a private home or outside of a public system? Is it called an ATU?
Yeah, so an ATU, so the most basic system after a cesspool, which aren't, which are going to be banned, right, is a septic tank and a, and an absorption field.
Right.
So the septic tank does part of the treatment, and then the absorption bed does the rest. It filters through and bacteria live in there and they eat the food. An aerobic treatment unit provides essentially full secondary-level treatment, just like we have at the treatment plant, in an onsite tank. It has an aerator and stuff like that. You can get equivalent treatment to that, full secondary treatment with a, like a wetland type system, which would be a septic tank followed by a wetland, and it evaporates most of the water as well, so it doesn't have much of a discharge. There are many other different kinds of things as well that are available. Getting that information, you know, the Department of Health has a pretty good website with a bunch of information on there. And then really, the best thing is to contact one of the engineers. There are engineers who spec, who specialize in that type of work, and they're aware of all the different kinds of technologies that are available. The more, the, Ed, there's a, but there's a big range of cost of different types of systems as well. So there are systems that require electricity, some that don't, some that require more maintenance than others. So there's a lot of different, you know, options and trade-offs associated with different kinds of onsite systems.
So those current onsite systems that are most advanced, they totally clean the water?
Yeah, they do. They would clean the water and make it acceptable for, for discharge, you know, into the ground. In some cases, it could be recycled. The, but you have to get permit, you know, to do that.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you very, that's one thing that we're trying to do here in Ha'ula. Just wrote an earmark to Jill Takuta to help us cover, replace cesspools with ATUs.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. And, and it is a good point. There is, there is potential to get some federal funds to do that kind of stuff, and the state also is looking into that. There was a bill this session that died, unfortunately, didn't make the crossover, but there was $12 million for closing cesspools. It'll get re-induced, it'll be reintroduced again, and, and hopefully, you know, over time, these things will, will start to get through for, to assist folks with the upgrades. The city is also looking into some programs, but we're not quite ready to, 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 to roll those out yet. But there are, it is, has been discussed a lot. There's a lot of action going on right now with cesspool conversions statewide.
Just one more question. How is Department of Health with that? Are they following along in this process, and do they understand totally?
Yeah, absolutely. For the most part, they've been leading the process with some of the legislators, but definitely the Department of Health is, is a driver.
Are they following along in this process and do they understand totally?
Yeah, absolutely. For the most part, they've been leading the process with some of the legislators, but definitely the Department of Health is a driver. They also have a big grant from the EPA. And we're, all the counties are participating in it as well. And that's basically a technical assistance thing and a planning, a big planning grant. So they bought, they hired consultants who are helping each county develop plans, costs, public outreach, and all kinds of materials. So the Department of Health is a big driver.
Person that's leading that effort on Oahu with EPA?
Yes.
I may want to talk to you later. Okay, thank you.
Happy to talk to you, yeah. My contact information is on the flyer.
Quick question. Sorry, we'll go to members of the public here in person. Any other questions or, go ahead, you can use the microphone here.
Yeah, this is, this is what I was going on with the video situation and what's going on with the Navy and how are they complying with your folks or not? As to what's going on? And just knowing from the lack of response from the military about what's going on out there. And the reason why I ask this question is because my dad was inspector for the Navy back in seventy eight. And he pointed out that there was a leak going on even at that time. But the government didn't do anything about it and had, it just found out it was kind of interesting.
Yeah, so the Red Hill fuel spill, you know, impacted the groundwater, the drinking water. So the support of water supply mostly dealing with that. We assisted to some extent when they were doing flushing of their system. We took some of their water to the wastewater treatment plant. Most of it was cleaned and discharged into the stream. But otherwise, we don't have too much involvement with that because it doesn't really impact wastewater.
Members of the public in person, any other questions? I'm going to go online. Our hotels, I'm going to start with the chat. Are hotels built by this, the same structure or are they hired just?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So there are, we have residential customers and non-residential customers. Hundred and forty thousand accounts roughly that are residential and about nine thousand are non-residential, which is all types of commercial, including restaurants, hotels, any other kind of business that exists. And so a hotel, and so the billing structure is the same, but I have to explain. So $77.55 per single-family residence, $4.63 per thousand gallons. So for a hotel, if it has 400 rooms, that's equivalent to 400 homes. So they pay $400, 400 times $77.55 as their base charge each month, plus the same volumetric charge. How much water they use, it's charged $4.63 per thousand gallons. Now, other types of businesses where it's not rooms that are equivalent to a house, we have what's called equivalent single-family dwelling units. So we determine how many houses that business is equal to. And then it's 10, then we charge them 10 times the $77.55. And so how do you determine whether it's 10? You calculate, you have their flow data and you know how much wastewater, how much water they've used. And you say that's the average number for a house. You say that number, divide by that number, and you get how many houses equivalent it is. So that's how the fees work. Everybody pays the same fee structure. You just have to determine how many houses it's equivalent to.
Okay. There was a question about Arete and the Turtle Bay development and all of that, but you're, you kind of answered it and just want to clarify. So if we get the permits, that means they have the wastewater capacity. Is that correct?
Exactly. Or they would have to expand in order to have the capacity at Turtle Bay.
Okay, we'll go to online. I see Jacob with your hand up. Jacob, we'll go to you first and then after that, Melody. Please proceed, Jacob.
Hello, I was wondering, do you guys do, can you guys do more informational videos of training the public what not to flush down the toilet? So, you know, to hurt the infrastructure or cesspools themselves? Like for instance, what I seen like from a video from New York where an operator says, we only want the four Ps, toilet paper, puke, pee, and poop. Nothing else should be flushed down that toilet. You know, make more informational commercials to instruct the public to keep the system, you know, not degrading the system technically.
Yeah, appreciate the comment. So I do usually say that before, every time I testify before counsel, I say that toilets are not trash cans. We want the three Ps, poop, pee, and toilet paper, and nothing else. Everything else is refuse, it should go in the rubbish can. But don't put everything in rubbish can. Recycle. We try to make it easy. You got the different carts. You can go to a convenience center and you can recycle stuff. But yeah, thank you, that's a good comment. We do have promotional videos and, or public services announcements and stuff like that. But we will, we will, you know, try to get that out, you know, more, more to the public as much as possible.
Thank you. Okay, Melody, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, I have a question. I am co-chair of the Environmental Caucus. And the hearing on Senate Bill 438 was heard today. And that was with regards to building landfills over an aquifer. Now, someone brought up about Red Hill. We don't want to have a Red Hill situation where there is a landfill that leaches onto our aquifer and poisons the municipal water system. In addition to that bill, which was gutted in this, in this sense, it would have prohibited, as written initially, to, it would have prohibited fly ash from being used as landfill cover as well as used in asphalt for roads. Now, that's looking at H power's combustible ash, which is highly toxic with dioxins and furons, the most toxic chemical known to man, being used as asphalt in roads, essentially making each pothole a mini hazmat landfill. So we're highly against that. And I have, you know, I believe Roger Babcock, you are in favor of something like that, which would cause highly, well, carcinogenic chemicals within, within the communities. So as you know, potholes, once are road building asphalt, once it's run over so many times, it's, it's, being solid is only good for so long. And then you're going to have all of this toxic chemicals, ash, available for inhalation or other ways of coming into the human body, causing, of course, all of those health risks and community risks once this type of toxic chemicals go into our waterways and oceans. What is your feeling towards that?
Yeah, thanks. Happy to address that. It's not about sewer fees, but that's okay. We, we do take care of solid waste and that means the landfill. And that means H power, means collection and disposal. As you know, we are trying to, we do need to have a landfill. There may be a future, sometime in the distant future, where you don't need a landfill and you could ship everything somewhere else. But that's not really sustainable and has a big carbon footprint to ship all our waste away somewhere. So H power is necessary because it reduces the volume of our rubbish by 90%. So that means it only takes up 10% of the landfill space as rubbish does if you don't burn it. At H power or any waste energy facility, you make two types of ash, bottom ash and fly ash. Bottom ash is like if you had a fireplace and you burned some wood. That's the stuff in the bottom. Fly ash is the heat and the soot that rises up. In our case, it goes to air pollution control devices, bag houses and other things, and it collects all that soot. And that's called fly ash, because it flew out and then it was captured. So those two ashes are separate things. The bottom ash is what we propose to, is, so these two are combined. They're cooled, they're combined, and they're taken to the landfill currently. First, they're processed to remove metals and aluminum, and that's recovered. Hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of tons per year of metal is recovered from that. What we're proposing to do is to do an ash recycling project to reduce the amount of ash that goes to the landfill by 60%. So this has been designed and we're currently permitting with the Department of Health. Let me just explain a little bit more. So it's processed very simply, kind of like processing that happens in a quarry where there's screening, crushing, grinding, and sizing to get a product. But it's just the bottom ash, it's not the fly ash, only the bottom ash. Fly ash is too light and fluffy, doesn't make, it's not useful for anything. So it's treated separately. The bottom ash, though, can be screened and filtered, and then you can make a material that's equivalent to sand. It's not sand. There's some metal, there's some glass, there is some sand and other materials that are small. It's finely graded those that it can be used in construction material. So it can be used in asphalt. And that's the permit that we have applied for from Department of Health. In order to get a permit, we have to submit all kinds of data about the constituents in the ash and the ash product. You also have to make asphalt out of it and then grind it up again and test it. And at both cases, we have to do bioavailability testing that's required. And so we've submitted all that data. And until and unless we do get permits from the Department of Health saying it's safe to do, if that happens, we will construct the plant and do the project. I just want to reiterate a couple of things, though, about asphalt. So lots of asphalt is used every year in Hawaii to pave roads. But all sand that's used in asphalt is imported, most of it from Canada, because we don't get to use beach sand, right? That's for the beach. There's no sand mines here. So aggregate is mined here from our quarries. So that's the larger pieces that are in asphalt that you can see. But the sand is all being imported. So this would be a local source, local supply of sand for an asphalt. Seems like Department of Health is going to limit the proportion to 50% of the sand replaced with local ash-based sand. And that's based on the contaminant levels in, in the, in the, in the sand. So, so that's the, that's the proposal to happen. We have the facility, we have the space to build for the facility adjacent to H power to do this processing. So it is, it is part of our main mantra, which is reduce, reuse, recycle. It's keeping our waste here instead of in the landfill, using, reusing it. Now, as to concerns about toxicity or other things like that, that is exactly what the Department of Health evaluates. That's their job. There's EPA rules, there's state, there's state rules, and it has to do with each individual metal and contaminant involved. So they're analyzing all that. And if it's, if it's okay, then it's okay. So it's incorrect to think that the asphalt will become aerosolized and the contaminants would become something that we would breathe. That's not the way asphalt works. Also, just so you know, the things that are used to make asphalt now, without any recycled material, have a lot of toxic contaminants in them. Okay? So a piece of advice, don't eat asphalt. It's not good for you now. And that doesn't really change if you use recycled products in there. There, we would only be allowed if the contaminant levels are still acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public online?
Can I, can I ask one more question, Chair?
Well, let me go to in-person. Anyone in-person?
Okay.
Okay, one more question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Babcock. There's another issue that is of our concern, and that's regarding Lake Wilson. We're under the understanding that municipal wastewater is being pumped into or discharged into Lake Wilson. And that is an area where there is recreational fishing and crabbing or whatever else they do. So that wastewater that is, I mean, basically, when people fish, they consume it. So is that wastewater treated before it's going into Lake Wilson? And is there sufficient notice to the public that there is some risk involved? And do you, most importantly, test for PFOS?
Yeah, thank you. Happy to address those questions. So the, there is a wastewater treatment plant in Wauhua, the Wauhua wastewater treatment plant. That's the oldest wastewater treatment plant in the city. It's been in operation since 1929. It has obviously been upgraded many times and most recently to a very, very modern technology called a membrane bioreactor. Provides a very high level of treatment. In addition, we have tertiary treatment there to create recycled water. It's called R1 quality water, the highest quality of recycled water. And that flows into, it does go into Lake Wilson, as it always has since 1929. And then it flows out and out into, and is used for irrigation in the, in the Dole, in the Dole areas and other farming that's done out there. So it is recycled water and it is, does meet the requirements to be used for irrigation and other uses. I did want to mention, though, that we do have a project with the state ADC, Agribusiness Development Corporation. It's a state, a state organization for agriculture. They're developing the Galbraith lands in the, inside, outside Wauhua to accept all of the water, all of the recycled water from the Wauhua treatment plant, which is about 2 million gallons a day. They're building reservoirs and irrigation systems, and there will be small farms that will be leased in that area. Our project to get the water there is to build a pump station at the treatment plant to pump water there and a pipeline. We're doing part of the pipeline and ADC is doing the rest of the pipeline, all the reservoirs and irrigation systems and all that kind of stuff. Our project is going out to bid this year. The ADC parts are a little, little bit more behind the, but it may take several years before, before that water's reused. But the, the other question was about PFOS. PFOS is a big concern, especially in drinking water. Most drinking water in, on the island does not have PFOS in it. I can't say that all of it doesn't. That's a good question for what a water supply. They have detected small amounts in some wells. And, but I believe that it's all under the drinking water limitation set by EPA that just came out about a year ago. But even if there's no PFOS in drinking water, there's PFOS in all wastewater. So it's coming from us in our homes. We are putting PFOS into our wastewater. It's in some clothing, it's in your non-stick pan, it's in utensils that you have, that you use in your kitchen, and it's in very, all kinds of other things in our homes. So we're exposed to PFOS all the time. And, and so it is in wastewater. So we are in the process of measuring that. There are no regulations yet for PFOS in wastewater discharges. The EPA is still studying that, as well as PFOS in recycled biosolids, fertilizer that we produce from waste, wastewater. There's also a concern about PFOS in compost because there's PFOS everywhere. And so it is a, it is a challenge. And it is something that we're very aware of. We are heavily regulated. We are required to measure it, but it isn't, there aren't limitations yet at this point. When limitations come, we will adapt and do whatever is necessary to treat, to provide treatment as required in any laws that happen to come up.
Thank you very much. That was very enlightening. Learned a lot, learned a lot. Any other questions from members of the public online or in-person?
I could go on.
I have a question.
Okay, well. We have a good point in our agenda, Melody. So I'll leave it up to the board. Or do you, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, oh, sorry, Andrea, okay. You're new, so yeah, please go ahead, ask your question. Was it, was it? Please proceed, Andrea.
Okay. I just wondered, on Maui, they're using some kind of UV light treatment on their water influence now. That's a better step. Is there a plan to do that with this water that you're talking about?
Yeah, thank you. So UV light is used for disinfection instead of, traditionally, folk, we used to use chlorine, like you use bleach in your house to clean things or even clothing or for disinfecting counters and stuff. But that's pretty toxic. So we switched to UV light in almost essentially all of our treatment plants over the recent years. So for example, in Wauhua, that recycled water is all made with UV light as the disinfectant instead of chemicals. We're installing that. We have that at Sand Island Treatment Plant. It's being installed in Kailua Treatment Plant. And, and so, and it's in design for Honolulu. So UV light is the best, the least toxic, there's no toxicity associated with it, right? It's just UV light. So you just give the bacteria cancer, skin cancer from UV light. And then that is used as a disinfectant. So it's, we've, we, we don't like to use chlorine, so we're going to use any chlorine anymore in, in the city. It'll have to be shipped and it's dangerous and stuff like that. So thank you for the question.
Any other questions? All right, here in N C, thank you very much. Thank you, Roger, for your time.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, let's move on in our agenda. Committee reports. Board members, do you have any reports from your various committees? Dottie?
Yes, I'd like to share my report time with Department of Land and Natural Resources to talk about the Little Fire Ant. Because this is really, really important for us to get ahead of this in Ha'ula since it's been established here.
Stand here. Okay. Good evening, my name is Ryan Prota. I'm with Department of Land and Natural Resources, specifically the Division of Forest and Wildlife. As you know, Little Fire Ant has been in the community for a while and it is migrating into the forest zone. And so now that it's in a forest reserve, it becomes our problem. We don't want it to get, to take over the forest. If it takes over the forest, it's going to be really, really hard to treat. I mean, it's like trying to get rid of ants in the jungle and the jungle is nearly the whole size, half the size of the island. If, if this happens and we're going to think we can get it, if this, you know, if, if it was to take over the forest, every native plant, not plant, but insect, damsel flies, you know, kamehameha butterflies, the native snails, kahuli snails. I mean, the native birds, the elapayo, the eby, you know, all that stuff, ma'akihis, they're, they're gone, like done. It's pretty bad. They'll, they can affect, when it's in private residences, it can get into the pets, like the cat's eyes and can bite the eyes and the cats can go blind. That's when they have an odor. But if it's a, you know, wild animal, you know, and a native wild animal, it's, they're toast. So we have engaged and we started doing surveys in the Ha'ula Forest Reserve. That's when you guys mentioned Ma'akua Ridge Trail is closed. That's just one portion of it. That includes, there's a sign that we, we posted, so there's a map that shows exactly where it is. So it's not the whole forest reserve, it's just a portion of it. And that's so that one, guys don't get bit, you know, people don't get bit when they're, they're going around in there. And then it's to help stop the spread of it. You know, you put your pack down, they crawl on your pack and you take your thing home and then it sucks. So the right side, which is Ha'ula Trail, which you guys mentioned earlier, the Ha'ula Loop Trail is still open, but the left side and portions of it is, is closed. That's for hunting and all that other kind of stuff. We are working with Hoyan Lab, Wahooa Basin Species, Department of Agriculture to kind of first eliminate where this is. Once you figure out the whole footprint of the infestation, then we can start doing treatment and stuff like that. It doesn't look like it went too far in the forest reserve, but I think a lot of the properties, Makai of that area, it's kind of wooded. I don't know if you guys know where it is. So all that stuff is pretty, it looks, doesn't look so great. And it looks like it's going into like a Secret Falls State Park as well. So now we're going to talk about working with state parks as well. We want to catch this thing in its entirety. One of the hangups right now, so I do, we figure out where it is, right? What, what's the footprint of it? Eliminate, we're doing surveys, we're tromping through the jungles, laying out bios, figuring out where stuff is. Then the next step would be the treatment part. We're looking at using this, this, this like this ant bait kind of thing with, with, with peanut butter. But we do need to get approval through the, like a special applicator license from the Department of Ag. So we're going to do it the right way. So right now we're working through the Department of Ag to get the proper authorizations and, and the permits and stuff for, for this treatment. There was a infestation in Maui in the Hipo, like 60 acres in the forest. And they were using helicopters to deploy all that stuff. They were able to catch it. So that's good. So there's hope that we can do it. They did it before on Maui, we can do it over here, guaranteed. But I think what we're going to try and do is drones, because drones are cheaper. Helicopters is like 13, $1,400 an hour. It's a little bit more dangerous, but if you use a drone, then there's nobody actually in the helicopter doing this thing. That's something else. So we think we can do it cheaper. We're working on it and stuff like that. So I think we just wanted to let you know that it's out there. That's the reason why it's closed. We posted signs. Guys have any questions? There's like quick links and phone numbers and whatnot on the signs that you can reach out to us. If you guys have any questions, if you guys, I think part of the problem also is, is the private residents too. You think you have it, put out little sticks with peanut butter and then the ants will get attracted to that. Then you can send it to the Hoyan Lab, just google stop the ant dot com or whatever. Just google stop the ant, Hoy, it'll tell you exactly, you know, how to get these things tested and whatnot. I think that's all I have to share.
People are still going up that trail, that we need a stronger sign that tells people not to go up the Ma'akua Ridge Trail. Can you help us with that or what should we do?
So I brought a picture, or not a picture. I brought a picture of the sign, which is actually the real sign. It says, attention, Ma'akua Ridge Trail, portion of forest reserve closed. This is the one that's actually posted there. So at the gate, right, the first border water supply gate, there's one, there's one, should be going to use it in a, the map sign. So you know exactly what's closed. And then furthermore is this one, it shows you a picture of an, that's like a picture of somebody that bites all over it. It says painful stings are unavoidable in highly infested area to ensure hiker and pet safety and prevent the spread of LFA. This trail will be closed until further notice. So we're talking about people getting hurt, you and your pets. So I thought we were trying to be pretty, pretty strong in saying this is why you should not go in. If you have any suggestions on how we can word it better, I mean, we got pictures of people got bites and stuff like that. I don't know if, if you have other pictures. There we were going to put a picture of a cat that got blinded, but then nobody hikes with a cat. So it wasn't exactly the right picture, so we took that off. But yeah, I mean, if we, we don't want people to go in and we don't want it to spread. So yeah. I'm not sure. I, I don't, I don't know where, which fire ants you're talking about. But there's the big red ones and there's, these are really small, small little ones. So the, the, the big ones, the big red ones you see at the beach, that's the one that I grew, we called fire ants. That's not this, this is different. Yeah, no, that's, this is different. These are in the trees. So if you're hiking through the forest and you brush up against the leaves, they, they'll crawl all over you. If it's windy, they'll, if you're sitting on it, they'll rain down on you. It's horrible. It's, it's not deadly, it just, it's really horrible. Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't want to think everyone's going to die from this thing, but yes, it's, yeah, yeah. But, yeah. I think what we really need to do in, in terms of people going through is, is actually, it's an enforcement issue. I mean, you, you can pull signs and people are just, just going to disregard it. So the best thing you can do is call 643 DLR. I believe that's what the enforcement, the gate wardens are and let them know that people are in there. And the whole trail is closed. They just wait for the guys to come out and they just tag and stuff. So it's, it's really an enforcement issue, personally, what, what I, what I think. So just call Don't Care, gate wardens.
I have a question, Ben Schaefer. Maybe just a little bigger sign. And I think if you put a $10,000 fine, you know, and it comes out of your pocket right away. And I think, you know, you want to keep the, on top of that, that $10,000 is going to go to those who squeal on you. Here's one of them, right? And so the whole idea, you want to catch them and, and reward the people that want them.
Okay. What do you, this is a 12 by 18. Double this. This is 12 by 18. That's our experience. It's a label maker. Thank you.
All right, any other committee reports? Kelly, go ahead.
Culture and Arts, we are having, March the 19th, we're having a talk story with Steve Su, who is the producer of the Shaka. They're going to be coming to the Marriott to, to show it. And so myself, Cy Bridges and Steve Su will be the people talking. And Joel Apo Keau will be there to talk story and the community is invited. It starts at six to seven and it should be very interesting. He's going to just share with the community of the Shaka and the sign of aloha. We also are doing a cultural pelina'ola with, with the Mahia Keo at the Marriott. Part of that is to, is to introduce a movement and, and to using Hawaiian culture. And so I'm doing the hula with people that are on wheelchairs, coming just to move. And so that's been done every Tuesday and Thursday from five to six P M. And so right now we have about 15 people coming from Kahuku all the way down to Ka'ava. Just come and they, they're in their wheelchairs and some are just, you know, in their regular chairs and they're just dancing. Hula using, sitting down, using their hands and feet and smiling a lot. Thank you.
Any other committee reports from board members? Okay, seeing a hearing now, we'll move on in our agenda to public announcements. This is a public input committee announcements. Everyone gets two minutes. There is no questions. So if anyone has an announcement to make, please come on down. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'm here from Hawaii Bicycling League. I'm Chris Salas, I'm the events director. We have the Haleiwa Metric Century coming up on Sunday, April 27th. Just putting it out there and letting you guys know that there'll be 600 to 700 cyclists out on the roads in the North Shore. They start in Haleiwa, they first go out towards Kai, Kaiina Point and then probably maybe a third to a half will then not make it all the way out here. But the final turnaround is Halua Beach Park. But yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other community announcements? I'll go to online as well. Any members of the community have an announcement? Okay, here in N C, none, we're going to move on in our agenda. Approval of the regular minutes. The board members, we have approved the Thursday, August 8, 2024 meeting, the Thursday, November 14, 2024 meeting, the Thursday, February 13, 2025 meeting, the regular minutes. I'm sure you had the chance to review all of that. And with that, do I have a motion to approve? Okay, I have a motion by Dottie and the second by Fekella. Any objections, reservations here in C, none, chair votes. I, board announcements, the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 10, 2025, at the Ha'ula Community Center here. And the other announcement is City and County of Honolulu and Hawaii Food Bank are partnering to fight against hunger. Neighborhood Assistant Anson Wu will be collecting donated goods at the next neighborhood board meeting on Thursday. Let's bring some food to Anson. And with that, board members, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, then we're adjourned. Thank you.